Okay, we're ready to go. Call to order, the Evelyn City Council meeting, five o'clock, September twenty first, roll call.
Council Rosey.
Here.
Council Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Goivinen.
Here. Approval of the minutes from council meeting September seventh, two thousand twenty one.
Motion to approve.
Got it.
Motioned and approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion granted. Approval of agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Moved by Rosey, support by Council Lillis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Appointment and presentations, we have none. The consent agenda, approving of payroll, August sixteenth through thirty first, two thousand twenty one. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Motion by Rosey, support by Lillis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved. Public hearings, we have none at the moment. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Resolution adopting proposed tax for the year two thousand and twenty two. Let's look here. General levy. So the person I was gonna ask is not here. She stepped out for a minute, so we have some airtime. The following tax levy pursuit to chapter four seventeen laws nineteen twenty one. We have a total levy of two million, two hundred ten thousand, two hundred forty seven dollars. And I hear her coming up the steps, so bear with us. We're just gonna kill an airtime, so you're here.
Okay. So you folks have met and talked about, um, the proposed tax for twenty twenty two, and, uh, there's an increase of total levy increase of a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Of that, about forty four thousand is for the new debt service, a part of the Garfield Street budget.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Council Lillis.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Rosey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Granted. Resolution adopting proposed budget for the year two thousand twenty two.
So I applied, um, the increased levy to the budget, the department heads all weighed in, uh, we met with you folks. It's your preliminary budget for twenty twenty two.
And this includes the amendments we spoke of at the workshop?
Yes. And between now and, uh, in December, when you set the final levy and the final budget, there's room to make, you know, changes, move money around in the budget, um, you can add the increase of levy, but you can decrease it if you so choose when you meet up.
And this is just a part of one of the, our proposed budget for the year that we've been working on, and we will keep you posted on how it's gonna end up. So can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Motion by Council Rosey, support by Council Lillis, all approved?
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion granted. Set a date for public hearing to discuss the proposed budget and tax for two thousand twenty two.
So you're required to, um, have a hearing, and it has to be between November twenty fifth and December twenty eighth, and it must start at six o'clock or after to allow people to differ from their work. So what we've done, what you've done in the past, either done it right at the council meeting or had it on a off Tuesday, and so it's really up to you. So your meetings in December are the?
Seventh and twenty first.
Right, seventh and twenty first.
Well, I'd be in favor of the seventh, and, you know, gentlemen.
Seventh is just wonderful.
I guess I would be in favor of the seventh, and we have two gentlemen not here, so it's gonna be on the seventh.
You rammed that one through, excellent.
Well, you know, it's the old saying, you snooze, you lose.
Yeah, they're lucky there's no committee appointees.
At six P M., so you also have to choose where you want to hold that meeting, whether it's here, the auditorium, it's up to you.
I think the last few times we've had it at the auditorium, but I don't think we've really had that many people showing up, so I would probably think it'd be easier for us just to meet here, if you guys think that.
Especially if we have it after a meeting, if we do that.
Works for me.
Well, then let's go with that.
Okay.
Do you wanna make a motion to?
I would make that a motion, Mayor, or CO.
Oh, seconded motion.
Moved and supported?
December seventh.
Let's, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion granted. Okay, we have number four, authorized staff to work with Brian Zadnikar at his body shop regarding city-owned property at four oh eight Fail Road in Evelyn. Can I get a motion?
I'll move that.
I'll support.
Moved and supported? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, and that is just to, for the people to know that Brian's gonna do some expanding down there with his business. They're going to, uh, I can't really get into too much of it, 'cause I really don't know that much of it yet, it's just, he's gonna be moving his business and expanding, so we'll keep you up with it when we know more. Okay, number five, consider accepting the Parks Commission's recommendation to raise camping rates effective October first, two thousand twenty one. And we had our two thousand and twenty rate was twenty five dollars a day, the proposed rate is thirty dollars a day. The, uh, weekly camping with electricity and water was a hundred and fifty a week, their proposed two hundred a week. The monthly camping with electricity and water is five hundred a month, the proposed is six hundred a month. The seasonal camping, May first through September thirtieth, is fifteen hundred dollars a year, the proposed rate is two thousand dollars a year. Winter storage is a hundred dollars a season, proposed rate is two hundred dollars a season, and with that being the rates, I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry.
Yeah, um, here's one misprint in there, I see the seasonal camping is actually sixteen hundred a year in two thousand twenty one, that's one, one, uh, one price we raised up, I think, two years ago or so, and I'm not sure why I had it at fifty, but it was sixteen.
Okay, so you're only going up four hundred?
It'd be four hundred, and most of these rates, the Park Commission might have been looking over for the last three, four years, and they are low compared to other campgrounds in our area with the same, uh, amenities. So we're just trying to be up in that same category, they're still lower than a lot of places, but, uh, it is a really nice campground, the people, the people are, you know, in the block here, we just wanna get the rates up to, up to anybody else.
Okay, that, it, it's come a long way from, you know, years ago, I mean, it's, we went from, you know, what, twenty campgrounds to, we're at fifty nine, sixty now? You know, so, and it's a booming place in the summertime. So with that being said, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Council Lillis, supported by Council Rosey, to raise the rates, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted? Number six. Here it is.
There we go.
Consider accepting public work director's recommendation to raise utility rates, I'm gonna turn that right over to you.
This, this won't affect, uh, the average customer, but pretty much all I go through our rates and see if we're, we're doing everything we can possible to stay up even with everybody else for what it costs us to produce water and create sewage. So when, when I was looking this year, well, the last couple of years, I've noticed that we don't have a water availability charge or a, well, we have a seventy five dollar water charge, if somebody, Newell comes in and taps into our water service, it's seventy five dollars, which is really cheap than their top record needs, it's pretty much enough. And, uh, the SAC charge is a sewer availability charge, which we have nothing, so when somebody comes in and taps into our sewer, it's enough, and it costs a lot of money, you have to, you have to have, uh, the ability to expand, so they pay a one-time rate, a five hundred for the sewer, two hundred fifty for the, uh, water access charge, and then they would be done, and that's just anybody tapping into the system.
So if you're building a new house, or a, a new business, or that's to tap into it, it's five?
Just to tap in and get that service in our system.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions?
In the bulk water, the bulk water, we, we went up, I think, five years ago to eight dollars a thousand, and bulk water is mainly just for contractors, when they come into town, they're looking for water, they tap off our hydrant, we make the hydrant, they tap off of it, and it costs eight dollars for a thousand, which is not, so I just wanna get that up to where it's costing what, what it should for them to come in and buy water.
And that's not that big of a jump?
No, no.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Jerry, thank you for getting us up to date, because I don't mind being low end, but I don't wanna be, you know, I, we wanted to be competitive too, we wanted to get where we are coming, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved by Council Rosey?
Support.
Support by Council Lillis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion granted. Number seven, consider purchase.
He needs to remove that one.
Yeah, I can remove it right now.
Okay, number seven is not on here anymore, I'm glad I was notified, like, right now.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to number eight, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Consider purchase of two VFDs, one for the water treatment plant and the two million gallon reservoir, and I will let you explain what the two VFDs are.
All right, these are adjustable frequency drives, and what they do is, they start up our pumps, and they start them up running fast, and then they slow them down to whatever frequency we want them at, so they're, they really, uh, save on pumps, 'cause usually a pump will, if it starts up, instead of running full blast all the time, while with these VFDs, it kinda slows them down to the pace you want, so you're not always running that pump at a hundred percent, so your pumps last longer, and we have them in every building, but what happened here, within a three-week period, we lost two of them, one in the water plant and one at our, at our breeding reservoir down there. And, uh, what happens is when their drives go old, or the motors go old, or the two, and they're about half the price to fix, they're, you know, they're brand new, fifty four hundred, if we were to fix one, we could probably fix it for twenty five hundred, just the bottom half, but they need to have a fourteen mil driving, which is gonna grow any time new, and the shelf life for, the length on those are about eight years, and we've got fourteen years on both of these. So I mean, they, they leave their expectations, but now they're starting to drop, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, they, they just said, if you get eight years on those VFDs, you're, you're losing them.
And it's just a, it's just doing business.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're telling us there's a need, and you gotta have it.
Yeah.
So any other questions?
Motion to approve the purchase?
I will second that.
Motion by Council Lillis, supported by Council Rosey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion granted. Okay, number nine, consider approving Veterans Park Campground Managers Agreement for the years two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty four. Jer?
Again, the Park Commission and I have been, uh, discussing, uh, new contracts with, uh, Veterans Parks Managers, uh, they do a fabulous job out there, um, and I thought they might be done after this year, but they decided to stick it all the way up, and try to lock them in a three-year contract, and they agreed, um, and they're not asking for any more, or any less than, like, a guy every year, uh, a little more compensation, and, uh, uh, we do definitely recommend locking them in for another three years, 'cause they do a fabulous job.
Well, you know, I haven't heard, we had a, uh, in years past, if somebody wasn't doing that great out there, we would hear about it, now, I haven't heard one thing about, you know, they're running very well, you know, so. Any other questions?
If you take a look on the back of that paper also, um, you can see kinda which, uh, revenue's been, how they've been climbing since, since, uh, late in the eighties, and how much we paid the managers over, uh, four years or so. Well, it's not like it went up drastically, but our, our increase in revenue has definitely.
There were fifty campsites, you know, we started, we were at twenty two, and then now we have, you know, the shower and everything out there, you know, so it has come a long way.
It's been moving along every year, it's.
I think each year gets better, you know, I mean, there's waiting lists for people though.
And Pizza has done a wonderful job out there.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, and his wife too.
Yeah, they're, they're good people.
Yes, they are.
He brings a moment of excellence.
Everybody needs to get pulled back in here.
It's called an anger.
Anything else? Can I get a motion approving the campground managers agreement?
I think it's my turn, I'll move that.
I'll support.
Moved by Council Rosey, supported by Council Lillis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Okay, here we go, consider certified police patrol officer eligibility list, chief?
Yes, last Thursday, um, Public Safety Committee and I interviewed client candidates, and she was a little top four, um, go ahead or not?
Okay, and then you'll go through the motions and let us know who we're gonna get eventually? Thanks for the hard work, you yourself?
You also?
Well, I'll go like that.
Thanks, both of you. All right, how's that, I'll get the energy attached.
Okay, yeah, we had a lot of good candidates, you know, it's just, like everything else, you gotta pick one of them, or maybe two. Okay, so do we have to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, can I?
So moved.
Seconded.
You guys are quick.
Well, we got it down now.
Motion by Council Lillis, supported by Council Rosey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion granted. Okay, counselors' presentation committee reports, board and liaison, anybody have anything to say, John?
Hello, me and Council Lewis, we're at a H R A meeting, and everything seems to be going just wonderfully there, we discussed, uh, projects for this year, we discussed, uh, not all our finances, and what we have left, and how much we can use, and of course, as you know, me being a financial wizard, I count on our, our people to, to have that information vetted, and everything she gave to us was right in line, oh, Mr. A O. is there too, he'll verify, 'cause he's on that committee, but, uh, I thought that things are going swimmingly, and they're, they're looking at, like, some improvements, you know, they gotta get the doors changed out and stuff in that area, but it's going good, I think, that's what I got out of it anyway. The H R A is, is interesting, because it's like, once you get everything fixed up, then you gotta start all over and do it again, you know, it, it's just. It's a constant habit. Yeah, well, you have to go through so many laws and regulations and everything else, so I mean, it's, it's a constant grind, so you guys do a good job on that. But to show for the need for it, the place is always full. Yes, yes. It's there, we don't have to sell it, there's people waiting to get it, so.
Then that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And again, we don't hear hardly any complaints here on it.
No.
You know, that means things are running good, kind of.
There's always room for improvement, but you know, that point four percent, we can chase that for the rest of our lives.
Yeah.
Anything in the nineties, I'm always happy.
Anything else?
I do have one, one announcement, is that I found out today, is that January first, the Hippodrome's gonna be a hundred years old.
Hundred years old?
Hundred years old.
Wow.
I did hear, just on the back burner, uh, probably gonna get in trouble for spilling beans, but they might be looking at some sort of program, or some sort of celebration, something to commemorate that, and make it into a conjunction with something that's going on down there in January, whether it's a youth tournament, or, or whatever, perhaps, you know, get some attendees.
I think that would be a great idea.
Because it is, uh, what I found out, that it's one of the oldest, uh, hockey arenas in, 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 in the nation, fourth or fifth oldest, and I think it's the oldest in the state, I'm not sure on that information, but, uh.
Almost every hockey.
I think that's, that's pretty outstanding, when you go to San Diego and you tell somebody you're from Evelyn, and they ask you, oh, did you play hockey in the Hippodrome, it's out there, the Hippodrome isn't just Evelyn, it isn't just Minnesota, it's nationwide, so we should, we should take that treasure and, uh, and treat it as a treasure, and, and, and celebrate its hundredth birthday.
I think that's a good idea.
But it's in the hands of other people right now, and we're gonna rely on them to come back to us with what they wanna do, and see what, what transpires out of it.
Well, we are here if they want to talk to us.
I guarantee you that they will be collaborating with the city as to that type of deal, because it is a city-owned building.
Yep.
Boy, did I talk, okay, someone else.
Are you done?
I think so.
Council Lillis?
Nothing tonight, sir.
I have nothing. So, chief, anything?
I just wanna let the public know next Friday already.
No, here we go.
Every street or gala park will be starting, um, next Friday, so the first two weeks, we hand out these little morning notices, so you're gonna begin to have a park, and it's, and the offices are just thrilled about it.
I think everybody's thrilled about it.
Friendly reminder that when we start.
So, two, two weeks of not doing the trade.
I have a couple of things, I guess, to bring up, so first, uh, the good news, um, Sammy Vituminus, the sub for White is, uh, was on Garfield Street today doing the grading, um, they intend to pave tomorrow, weather-wise, and stuff went okay today.
There'll be much rejoicing on Upper Hay Street, much.
A little bit of rain kinda held a few things off, but, um, some activity there again, um, on Friday, White would like to do some tree planting, and they needed some answers on a couple substitutions, um, I got this, and, uh, obviously, it's kinda short notice, I realize, um, we had ten silver maple trees in there, they're wondering if they can put autumn blaze in because of the availability of what stocks there, um, so that's real similar, they had, uh, red oak, the substitution that they're looking there is just a container versus a burlap, and then we had ash trees in there, nine ash trees, which aren't available anywhere in Minnesota because of the animal ash for infestation, they were looking to substitute, they suggested a redmond linden, I've never heard of it, so I had to look it up, it's kinda like a dogwood, um, you don't have, we don't have to accept that, um, we could ask them to do ash, or instead of ash, do so, you know, extra maple or extra oak, um, just something that came up.
But the only thing that you mentioned, that I know of, are the maple and the oak, I was gonna ask Jerry what he thought, I mean, then what do you guys think, would you?
We got enough basswoods in town, we like color, if you got color on him, at least that, that makes people feel better.
I mean, what do you guys think?
Little linden tree, doesn't that grow real tall?
Yes, I looked it up, there's this big shade tree, uh, seventy five foot tall, fast-growing species, I don't know much about it, other than that.
They're a hurdy tree, aren't they?
That's what it looked like, it fits the zone, uh, I believe it was like a zone two to eight, so it would grow in this region, I just, they're not common. And you don't have, if you don't wanna make a decision on that one, I, I get it.
Jer?
We could, we could look into this a little bit more.
I was gonna say, why don't you just to look into it a little bit, because I have no idea of all the different trees you said, you know?
We wanna make sure they're a good ballpark tree too, 'cause there's a lot of species that are not ballpark trees.
We're gonna be going back there every two or three years, pulling them out, 'cause they're dead.
Yeah, they're just alone, so we, we'll talk about. So we, we'll talk about more.
Okay.
Perfect.
You just work with Jerry on that, and just let us know.
Yeah, and then, uh, last thing I had, uh, brought was, uh, so I did get ahold of the water. I got the contract in my email some point today, and I was out of the boat. They asked to tentatively have a flag and everything ready for them, potentially next week. Um, they'd be in there if they finished the project they're currently working on, so...
Oh, good.
Turn it in the next week. If all goes well, uh, we'll see that project potentially start up as well.
Well, that would be nice. It looks like we got nice weather for the next seven, eight days, so hopefully we can get a lot of these projects going and done. Anything else, Al?
That's all I have.
Jer?
I was just gonna mention, I'm having a tough conversation about the air support, you know, working for it. Oh, yes. Is that still something we need to talk about? Because there, there, the somebody did ask if, if they could put on a base this year, and we wait till next year and put, uh, a hot cord on. And there's more than, in constant, I look at them, like, if, if anything sinks, or, you know, moves a little bit, they have to come back, or warranty work, however, how many layers they put on. Um, and if they just put a base on, we're plowing against curves that are probably, you know, you've got a couple inches that contain on the edge of the curves, which would bring the curves up a lot. So I guess that's just something we wanted to talk to you about, and see what, what your thoughts on it. Uh, were, do you want to go ahead and finish it up all this year, and have, be done with it? Or should we ride on it for a year, and, you know, if there's any movement, then we'll...
My preference would be to have the project completed in its entirety, if, if abs, or, unless it's absolutely necessary to do otherwise.
And if it did sink, they have to come back to fix it anyway?
Yeah, they'd have to come and fix it.
And brand-new curbing with big chunks flying off, it bothers me tremendously.
Yeah, and that's the biggest problem, I don't like them all.
No, and I don't care how good a plower you are, you're gonna touch it, and it's gonna give, 'cause them plows are heavy, and you're not creepy, and so on. I, I, I too think we should finish it up and be done with it.
In my opinion, I feel that way also.
Plus, my neighbors won't wanna hurt me.
That's...
They don't wanna deal with another year.
But if you could just tell, we'd like it...
Like it complete.
Like it completed?
Contract, uh, I believe the, I'll, I'll have to verify this, I believe the final completion date was October fifteenth. We were trying to get it done, and I was, in case you got early cold weather, um, that could make that final painting seams not as well, um, but yes, it was brought up, uh...
Do you see any problem with meeting that deadline?
Not, not right now, as long as they got the space for us, that's what we were kinda getting worried about. Um, I, Jerry had brought it up with me a couple weeks ago already. When is it happening, when is it happening? And we weren't getting anywhere on it, and weren't hearing nothing, and...
Well, even if they have...
Sani was booked, and...
If they have to go a little bit longer, too, I mean, the middle of October, you still got three weeks to do, season is usually not snowing the ground until then.
I'd prefer they get it done now, the warmer weather is better for, uh, the seams. When you get it in, they, they just bind better and everything. Um, but yeah, the final lift is what they were worried about. So say there was a warranty correction, um, if you put the final lift over that warranty correction, it kinda hides everything. Um, there's still, would be warranty coverage on it. If, if there was some settlement, the, the big difference is you'll see a seam from where, say, a patch was performed on, if it was utility, or if it was, uh, settlement-related work, um, that's gonna show up on the warranty work, uh... So just the final, what it, what it looks like, it's not a big difference, or... The plus or minus to it is, is yes, it's, uh, if we just have it done, there's no chance of the city damaging the curves that are exposed over the winter, so...
And anybody can do it, too. There's lots of guys that have plows on their trucks, and they drop it, and it doesn't take much of a chip.
Exactly.
How delicately you set mine down.
There's a lot of guys that just dropped their plow, where they please.
I know what you're talking about, I've seen people do that.
So leave it at this, it's, uh, October fifteenth, final...
That's, that's a consensus that I have out of these two. Okay, Jer, anything else?
That's it, Andrew.
Oh, you sounded so pleasant there. Jackie, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Steph? You know I have to ask, Bobby's watching me. Well, I have nothing, Bill has nothing, I guess, uh, that's it. Meeting adjourned.